I'd like to call this meeting to order with a reminder that the actions taken this evening will focus on our students and their achievement. With that, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion about the consent agenda or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to item C on the agenda, public comment. I have not been contacted. All right, moving on to the communication student board member report.
I am Drew tonight, so.
Hi Drew.
Well, thank you. Yes, I have that honor, so, yeah. I could move. Drew was not able to be here tonight. We have our first round of basketball at home with the Cedar Falls boys playing tonight. So, he sent the electronic version of his update and he just talked about the fact that tonight we have the substate basketball game that starts at eight o'clock. And for students that we had our dance marathon, which we're still tolling the money. Looks like they sold roughly 200 tickets compared to 70 last year, the previous year, and they're very excited about that. They even had 14 different dodgeball teams that participated. They're looking forward to their annual blood drive, which will be held March 10th. And he said he will provide some additional information to the board at the next meeting for that blood drive as well. State wrestling, they sent three wrestlers to the state tournament. All three won their first match. However, two of them lost the next two and did not place. However, Dan Kelly did make it to finals and came in second. For the upcoming events, they have the boys' substate game again tonight. And then they also have the girls' regional tomorrow night at Cedar Rapids Kennedy. The winner goes to the state tournament. So, questions that I can answer on behalf of Drew?
Things against tomorrow night at Cedar Rapids?
Seven.
So, okay.
Yep, and I think Kennedy is seeded first. Is that correct in that bracket? So, should be a great game, great opportunity for our girls.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks Drew.
Hey, thank you.
Moving on to item E on the agenda, the information report. Pam, medium, or?
Tonight, we have some of the staff from our health services department here to share some information with you. I'd introduce them all, but that's their first PowerPoint and I hate to take away somebody's role with that. But, we meet on a regular basis, once a month, to review some of our plans and procedures. We've been working hard on our exposure control plan. We've worked hard on the allergy sensitive environment. And I feel like we've had a good working relationship and a lot of communication between what they're doing and what we need to be doing as a school. So, I'll turn it over to you guys right now.
Okay. I'm Shannon Egomals. I'm the school nurse program manager. Okay, just with that. Okay. And Pam touched on some things that we already have in here, so we'll elaborate on that a little bit here. As you know, this is our fourth school year contracted with the Black Hawk County Health Department for your school nurse services. So, we just want to take this time. We're thankful that you've asked us to come here and review this. As I said, I'm Shannon Egomals. Carrie Klosman is also here. Stand up. She's the nurse at Cedar Heights, Orchard Hill, and Pete. Stacy Hendrickson is the nurse at Hanson, Holmes, and Southdale. And Janet Williams is the nurse at Cedar Falls High School, Lincoln, and North Cedar. And Diane, our preschool nurse, came as well. She's at Cedar Heights, Hanson, North Cedar, and Southdale. So, we keep her busy as well as, she also works with some head start centers in Waterloo. We did not bring all of our school health assistants. We could have made your room a little bit more full, had we done that. So, this is just an overview of who is at those schools. We also pointed out that seven of the nine school health assistants are current, are past parents of Cedar Falls students. So, they are involved in your community, involved in the schools and activities and at that level as well. So, kind of have a vested interest there. We also have three float health assistants that we will use for if there's illness or vacation time or scheduled time off. So, we do have some coverage that way as well. Okay. With our communication, nurses are provided cell phones that they carry with them daily from building to building, even if they're not physically there at all times. One thing came to mind when I was just reviewing this slide. Janet has a diabetic student at one school who actually calls her on her cellphone. And that's a, that's a good connection because it, it gives him responsibility. And he reviews what his blood sugars are, what his insulin should be, and he does that call directly. So, even if she's not in the building at that time, they are available to talk to and review that. We also communicate with parents as needed, in person, of course, through emails, notes, letters, phone calls, parent meetings, texting. That's how you guys are probably with me on that. A lot of response that way as well. And especially with the kids with the health needs, that there might be a lot of communication with parents that way as well, maybe even daily. Also available to attend weekly staff meetings in their buildings. Some buildings, they're involved in, a lot of those, I know you have one at Holmes that they have, that she's able to go to. And with that being said, because of the model of how we know that we have that health assistant in the school health offices, the nurses are available to do that kind of thing. One of the things I think that's in here was related to Medicaid billing. And they just had a meeting this morning with the Medicaid billing company, Timberline, that you contract with. So, they were able to go to that meeting and still feel like the students' health needs were getting met at the school level. With the health assistants and school nurses, like I said, they can focus on educating staff, also being pulled out to attend IP meetings as those occur, developing individualized healthcare plans, and that Medicaid billing and doing all those extra duties that are involved with that. Let's see, also making classroom visits, and that's kind of occurring right now, probably. They just finished their boys' and girls' night out discussions that they did with the parents and the students. And then they go out into the classroom and help with those programs as well.
And Shannon, I'd like to share there too, we've actually worked with our counselors to put the boys' and girls' nights, I guess make it more meaningful for people because we felt like some of our kids know our school nurse as well, but not all the kids in the building where they all know the counselor. So, now our counselors also attend those meetings. And we've just received feedback and we've had a lot of parents comment that they really like the changes that have been made to our program.
Yeah, got good feedback on this year, as things have changed.
How do you get that feedback?
There's a survey, and I know in the girls' night out, did we have 86 or 87, maybe, parents that responded back?
Wow.
And on the boys' night, I know Dave sent the feedback, but I don't know the exact numbers for sure. But, right there as people leave, we hand them the survey. And we have surveys for students and surveys for parents.
Excellent.
Also, one-on-one time with students, what that kind of means is sometimes a student comes into the health office and Janet might share some more of her experiences she's had in the past too. But, when you have a room full of kids that have needs and one student needs particular attention, if the nurse is able to be there and pull them away and still know that the health assistant's there to tend to the needs of the other students. So, that kind of thing can happen that way as well. Also, we're conducting health screenings, blood pressures, heights, and weights. We kind of do that throughout the year. And then also Lions Club, we are coordinating with the Lions Club to do vision screenings on preschool students and kindergarten students, which Diane Hoffman actually, you had talked with them originally when they started with preschool students. And you approached them or somehow a conversation happened that we talked about also including kindergarten. And they were very happy to do that. The Lions Club has purchased equipment to do this vision screening. And then that testing is, the photograph that they take is sent to the University of Iowa through the Iowa Kids Site Program. So, if parents, it is offered to the preschool. We get quite a few people, students that do that and the kindergarten students. And they have to have a consent. Lions Club is, you know, they're very good with all that record keeping and we assist with that as well. And then all of that gets sent down. Diane actually became a member of the Lions Club too, so that's helpful.
It's a wonderful program. Actually, it's free, doesn't cost anybody anything. And we do from basically six months of age up until six years. And all over the state, the Lions Club with the Kids Site Program do this. And roughly 10% of the children that we screen are referred into an eye doctor, which out of that 10% that get referred in, 90% are placed in corrective lenses. So, wonderful program and it's all free, so we can't, and they're going to keep on continuing to build this. Hopefully, I don't know if you're familiar with the IRIS, it's an immunization program. Eventually, University of Iowa hook up with IRIS and so it will go onto a program, computer program like that. That's coming down the river, but wonderful program.
Yeah, so last year, actually, they passed law that incoming kindergarten students and incoming third grade students had to have this vision screening done before they came in, before they started school. We came into the school year, law is passed, but there really isn't the guidelines. They're starting to come out with how that's going to work and they're going to record it on that IRIS program. But, they're also including that within the first three or six months, I think, there's something that just came out, that it could be done at school. But, they of course don't want it to be the burden of the school. So, they're trying to figure out the best way to do that. Ideally, obviously, a vision exam with an eye doctor is the best course to do that. But, we know reality is not everybody is able to do that or does do that. So, anyway, these are some other options. And Diane, I don't know if you heard, she mentioned the 10%, we're doing about 10% referrals of all of those that have had this Lions Club vision screening done. We never had anywhere near that when we were doing the screening with the card, you know, and the, where we're just working with the student and they're, you know, covering one eye and saying which way the table legs go or whatever letter that they see. So, they're picking up more things. And we're getting more kids in glasses and obviously kids need to see to be able to learn. And the thing is about those little ones, and I always encourage the staff that we work with is that, you know, you can ask parents, you can ask them how they see or how, you know, if they're having any trouble. Well, you don't know because the kids kind of compensate because they don't know that they're not seeing well. So, until maybe they're like, their friend can see that, they just think that's the way life is. And so, then it's amazing when they get those referrals and are in glasses and need to be. We also work with the Eye Smile Program. We have a dental coordinator. She's over several counties, but she's actually housed at the Black Hawk County Health Department. So, she gives them direction and supplies to do dental screenings, again with parent consent. And they also do place fluoride varnish with that dental or with that consent as well. That's preschool and kindergarten again.
So, do you apply the varnish or the assistants do?
Yes, we do.
Yep, nurses do. Yep, the health assistants, sorry. Which is another thing, they're out doing that as well. And again, the health assistants are in the health office so that we're allowed to be able to do those type of programs. Health concerns, office visits, these are just some of the things, some of the bigger things that we see. Obviously, we have diabetic students. We have a number of EpiPens for allergies. We hear about the peanut allergies. Some have others. We have a milk allergy. We might have bee stings. And so, we have several epinephrine pens for that kind of diagnosis as well. They also are involved in nursing procedures, specialized cares that require the supervision of the nurse. Some of the things might be delegated, some of the things the nurse goes to do, like cath, they might be doing catheter procedures on students. We have a couple at least in the district that we do that. And G-tube feedings, that's another one that we see as well. Also, we have several students with seizure diagnosis. So, they would work with the family and the physicians to write those health plans and what we need to do if seizures should occur. We have some medications in the health office to help to manage those seizures as well. Asthma, that's a big one. Lots of kids with asthma, some more severe than others. And the nurses kind of have to help decide that, which they kind of tend to know the kids that have the higher concerns with asthma and how to manage that. This was just some data we pulled off of Infinite Campus because we chart all of our health office visits at Infinite Campus. Just last month, in the elementary schools, the health office visits, so students came in for Band-Aids, lost tooth, coughing, fevers, vomiting, all of the whole gamut. 1,789 in the sixth elementary schools, right? And in secondary, 528 visits.
And we have found at the elementary, those numbers have increased because they're getting more and more students that have severe needs. And we also have, our enrollment is up, so that has made a difference. And now, we are taking three-year-old preschool special ed students. And so, we have seen a significant increase there too. As of the end of March, we may be up to 18 three-year-old special ed students.
These numbers would not include the medications that we give. Infinite Campus does have the capability to do that for us to document how, giving medication daily. Some school districts I've talked to are using that. We're doing more of just a paper plan right now. I'll just tell you the truth, I know, when I look at Infinite Campus, I know it wasn't written probably with medical people to, to give some input about that. So, it makes me a little bit nervous going to just electronic because it's not truly electronic health record. Where in the hospital, they can document their medications there. But, I don't want to miss anything that we're not documenting correctly and counting the medications like we are, which we have in place on our paper. So, although I like to get rid of paper, we aren't there yet with Infinite Campus, so we might get there. I think this is where I was going to turn it over to Janet.
I was just going to share a little bit. I'm Janet Williams. I've been a school nurse here since November of 2009. And previous to that, I'd been in another school district for 10 years. So, I'd worked under the model where I was giving direct care to the students and staying in the same office all the time. And I found myself struggling to find the time to do those things we just mentioned. I couldn't get out to get to meetings without leaving the student population uncared for. So, I have really enjoyed this model of nursing because it frees me from things like looking for coats and hats and mittens because that's part of what your health offices do. It frees me from going to find dry underwear and pants for somebody who peed their pants because that is part of what we do in our office. And, and those things are important. Your students cannot study if they're in wet clothes. But, it's something that's easy to delegate. And I have good, good trained health assistants in all the buildings. And they take care of skinned knees or bumps on elbows. But, when it comes to big, serious things, rashes that they don't recognize, they don't know what they are, and they won't diagnose. I don't diagnose either, but I can come and say, well, let's make a few phone calls. Are they taking antibiotic at home? I can do a little triage with them and then make the decision what we do next. So, having the health assistants in the positions that they're in has freed me to do those things that we've talked about. And I can do those things knowing that the immediate cares of the students in the buildings are being met. And that is a big relief, knowing that I can step out and yet know those needs are covered. So, let's just go to the next one.
Could you mention the safety committees before you move ahead? What's that about?
No, I know we pulled some of those things out. And so, I actually go, attend the district safety committee meetings as well as one of our division managers at Black Hawk County Health Department, which is kind of a nice connection because he and I can share information. And a lot of times behind the scenes, I'm talking to him over at the Pinecrest Building about what we should share at the school level. So, and the best way to disseminate that right now, I don't want to bring up a whole nother conversation, but we just talked last week about measles. And so, we want to kind of get some information out to family before and parents.
Thank you.
So, any other questions?
Just, I'll just, can I interrupt on your slide? We do have monthly meetings. And one of the things that I think has gone really well for the district is they teach our CPR classes to our staff members. Last year, we offered it three times throughout the year. This year, only twice because we offered it in the summer and we didn't have as many people participate. And so, we've been offering it two times a year. And the numbers have been pretty good. And the district, we actually pay for the recertification costs. Is it $25 a staff member?
For the research, it's only 19, but the initial time, it's a little more than that.
And the district chooses to pay for that just to make sure we have certified people in all of our buildings. But, Shannon and Janet usually offer those classes. And so, that, that I believe has gone really well. And some of those other things I already mentioned. Two years ago, we worked, we had probably four or five meetings. We had an allergy sensitive committee. Carrie, Shannon, and I worked with a group of parents and community members on that. And that actually went really, really well. And I see just this year in some of the state information that's coming out, they're referring to some of the resources we use. So, I felt that we were in the right direction there.
I was going to mention too, that apparently on a Google search, a nurse from Wyoming found our plan and contacted me last summer to ask more about that. So, that was pretty impressive. They were trying, they were having real difficulty in their district and they liked what we did and what we put together.
It's great to be part of a great team. You mentioned the CPR. I was actually going to put that on this one. There's some other things that we're involved in here, the kindergarten roundup, and that will be March 3rd. And I have little PowerPoints. I show up at my buildings. I take a session and, and share that information, what is expected and, and what the health office does, just to communicate that to parents on that night. And we usually help with registration at each school. Conference is that on the miss. Occasionally, we'll make a home visit. If I've got a student who's been absent for a period of time and I'm concerned, I'll call, make a home visit. I could never do that before.
And even when we have our preschool early registration, Diane has been coming to that too. And although the paperwork isn't due until they start school, if we find if we give the parents the paperwork now, gives them a chance to get into the doctors and stuff ahead of time. So, she's been showing up at 6:45 AM. Hand out paperwork.
Okay. So, is it?
This one right here.
Yeah, I know, is that the thank you one? Okay, so then, I was just going to say something personal as a thank you, and then we have a final slide thank you. I wanted to thank you for the support from the board to take continuing ed classes. And also for the tech support and our laptops. I couldn't do this job without my laptop. And when I have a problem with it, it's really nice to know that we have tech support in the building who can support us with that. The, the nice thing about Infinite Campus, because I've worked without electronic charting, I don't think I could do this job. I can get on and see what's happening in each one of my schools at the same time. Because their charting, as, as they go throughout the day, they chart. So, I can look something up out at North Cedar while I'm at the high school and say, oh, you know, I think I need to go out there and see what's going on. Without the electronic charting, I couldn't do that. And I can keep easy track of my phone conversations. There's a comment there. And so, when it comes up and somebody says, well, did you call them? Let me go check. I can't always remember everything. But, I try to document and then I can go back and look that up. So, I have not had the advantage of having that until I came here. And that was something, I have searched through a year of paper, entire pages of charts, looking for single entries on a student for a particular reason. And now, it's just a few clicks and I can print it off. I cannot say thank you enough for Infinite Campus and how, how that helps me to do my job. Then I want, I wanted to say thanks for allowing and supporting the CPR training because that also helps me to know that we have capable people in every building willing to step up when there's an emergency. And knowing that also frees us up to do our job. I wanted to thank the school board for supporting us when we have to say to a student, you cannot come back anymore until you go get your shots or bring in an exemption. Without that support, we don't have any power. So, I want to say thank you for that support. I think those are the main things I wanted to say thank you.
Is there a component that can be added to Infinite Campus?
Did I go the right way?
Is there a component that can be added to Infinite Campus that would expand what, how you can use it? Does it, is it capable of having, is there anything else?
We do have, one expansion we're looking at is online registration. And Shannon has been coming to our meetings on that as well. And then Janet was at the last meeting and we've talked about it in our monthly meetings, the kind of information we need to have on it.
It'd be nice to expand what we have to fit the needs you were talking about.
Well, I, like the medical, the medication, it is there. It's just maybe not as.
I don't know if the logistics is good because the computer's here and the med cabinet's over here.
And, yeah, little things like that too, on how you document and how it works. And, you know, I'm always kind of thinking, if we go down the road and get our, and things need to be looked at, I'm kind of thinking litigation sometimes, so you guys can understand this. Not that that happens, I just want to be able to defend what we're doing when we're doing it. And we can certainly do that with how we're documenting it. Our health assistants are signing off. And I could see when the medications are given very easily. It's not as easy to pull that from Infinite Campus that way. So, I want to be able to have an easy picture of what's going on with the medication. So, I'm not sure we're there yet, but I haven't talked to them further because they are willing to, to take suggestions. It's one thing, and I know we're going to run short on time, but I can talk forever. We realized that when we chart our health office visits, we, there's a little place where you lock it so that nobody can go in and change it, not even the person that did the documenting, okay? Because we need to be able to have, be able to track that. Well, we realized people could go in and change it, even after you said you locked it. And the person could change it and somebody else could change it, and that made me really nervous. So, we contacted Infinite Campus Community, it's called, and you give suggestions, and they made that change. So, we just haven't looked into further on how the medication might be able to work, but it may eventually.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Assuming is HIPAA compliant?
So, HIPAA is, in the school, in the realm of the schools, we really follow, the medical records even fall under FERPA, really. So, So the confidentiality and the rules fall under FERPA that way, so absolutely. But, so I don't know exactly what you're asking, but if, is it, confidentiality is a huge piece of it. Actually, the whole health information, the whole health section is only accessed by our health staff. Not everyone in the school has access to that, so if that's.
It sounds, it sounds reasonable. I think you, Janet, I'm sorry, you mentioned you had some health records, you can print them off.
Yeah, when I need to.
So I mean, I'm assuming you take care of those in terms of HIPAA compliance and stuff?
We really look at right to know, who has a right to know within the building? And then it might help too to share the IHP, how you guys go about writing the IHP and who's involved with that.
Okay. And also that can be uploaded to Infinite Campus, that's another piece that's really nice because documentation, that's really nice, we have it right there. Records can get passed from this school, that school and everything. So our health plans, individualized health plans are written, like I said, for example, a diabetic student and there'll be a health plan specific, individualized to that student. You know, how often they come into the health office, when they check their blood sugars, what the parameters are, what do you do if the blood sugar's over this level, if it's under this level, how much insulin to take. It might not be that specific because that's always ever changing potentially. But that information, what signs and symptoms to look for, if blood sugars are high or low, so all that information is in that health plan.
And that would be shared with their homeroom teacher, for example, if they're in elementary because they need to know that. But not everybody in the building needs to know that.
Does that answer that, how that works? Oh, yeah. We just had, and we might have mentioned some of these things, the county health department relationship. So because we have that relationship, we're employed by the health department, we have, we know the people very well and we work very closely. Jan has just been working with our communicable disease investigation a little bit too and some follow-up. Environmental health support as well, bed bugs. So we call over to that department, we've all had issues with that. I don't know if you want to share that. But we get that support from, we've even taken mugs over to be identified, to find out if they're really bed bugs or not. We, the health department does, works with the community on community health needs assessment and what types of things we want to improve in the community. And so that can filter down to the school district level and through our nurses as well. Of course, we work with the Iowa Department of Public Health. We have large meetings occasionally with, what we do with all of our school because we also contract with Waterloo schools, so information across that way with our school nursing staff as well. And then various trainings that are provided. We had someone from the county that came and did a mental health first aid training last, was that in the summer? Yeah. And so our nurses were all trained in that, so, and that's kind of coming down. I don't know if you guys will be seeing some of that, but the whole Obamacare thing is kind of filtering that down too with mental health reform and, and communities will be doing more of that mental health first aid type of training so that we all kind of can identify some early symptoms and when we need, and words we need to use when we're working with people that might be having issues.
Do the health assistants get an opportunity to talk to each other, sort of like a PLC or a network?
Yeah, but we have meetings with them also too, usually about every other month at least. And sometimes it might go consecutive, so sometimes they're with the big group with the Waterloo and sometimes we just do a smaller group here as well.
So their health assistants are pulled into that too?
Yeah.
What kind of training do the health assistants have?
They are, several of them are, some are CNAs, some are medical assistants. We have one that's an LPN. None of that is required. Of course, that's what we look for when we're interviewing, but it is not required. I'll be honest, that sometimes some of the best health assistants that we find, because it's really the nurses that are overseeing all of the health, of the students and they're supposed to be in communication and they are with the nurse. So sometimes some of the best health assistants are moms or dads that kind of have that intuitiveness to work with the kids. Like Janet said, that, you know, getting the clean pants. And sometimes it's that quite, that kind voice and that person to listen to. So, but they do have, we do have, they all have CPR, first aid training, medication administration. We use the Heartland AEA online training program. So they've got seizures and diabetic, and so if they've got students at their school, we have them do some extra training and then some one-on-one training, of course, with their nurses as well. And I think Janet already said and encompassed a lot of this, that we'd like to thank the Cedar Falls Community School District for your support and assistance in working to help create a safe and healthy environment for all students. And we're proud to be a part of a tradition of excellence. And I think we had questions.
Another thing I want to point out, Shannon, is last week when, last month, when Jill was here, we talked about the Medicaid and how that has increased. And the nurses really play a large part in that too. And actually, we just had Timberlake here this morning for some question-answer situations.
You did mention the measles. What is our policy on that as a district and how do we handle that? Do we have people who, do we allow exemptions or?
Oh, yes. Medical or religious exemptions for immunizations, yes.
That's part of Iowa code.
It is part of Iowa.
Yep, absolutely. But we shared at our meeting last week, I didn't bring that, but I think it, we actually are, well, Iowa is better than the national average on immunizations and the number of exemptions that we have. Some states actually also allow for, and I can't remember the term, but basically the parent that chooses not to do immunizations can just say, they can get an exemption. We don't have that in Iowa, it has to be related to a religious or a medical reason. And the medical exemptions, just to clarify that, are usually just maybe a certain immunization that they maybe had a reaction to. So they generally have some immunizations, but they just can't maybe receive one. But religious, generally, they don't have any. And we have, I think it was like 98% that we have, that we have valid immunization records on of the students. So, so it's really quite low.
Beyond valid, it said fully immunized.
Yes, fully.
Because there's a difference between a valid record when they're making strides towards filling that or when they're fully immunized.
So it's 98% fully immunized?
Yes, with immunization records, yeah.
And last fall, we talked to the principals too, and the principals have been really good at making sure if a student's not immunized and we tried to get the parents to work with us, but we have to set that kind of hard date, you can't come to school unless your child has the immunizations.
Or the waiver.
Or the waiver.
Peanut allergy thing comes to us frequently or occasionally. Are some people under that watch list for the peanut problem?
We have allergies in a lot of our schools. But we don't have any of our schools that are what we consider totally peanut-free or nut-free. We have what we call safe zones in our schools.
I thought Lincoln was headed towards peanut-free, not, didn't know that.
At one point, Lincoln and Orchard Hill were peanut-free and nut-free. And then when we started doing the research and what people were recommending, they talked more about doing the safe zones. And then we do have certain classrooms where if there is a student with a certain allergy, that we ask that they not bring it into that classroom.
So saying peanut-free, we are always cautious about because you can never 100% control everybody that walks in the door. But you also can tend to let your guard down too. Really like the guidelines that we came up with as to obviously other people in the country, but because it puts that focus, it really forces you to look at the plan, the individualized plan for that student and their safety, as opposed to saying, "We're peanut-free, we're fine." So it's.
And it was really interesting because on our committee, we had parents of students who had allergies and some who didn't. And one parent, their child doesn't have a peanut allergy, it's another allergy, but we can't keep milk out of our schools. And so we thought, what can we do for all of our students and come up with a plan?
So if you have a parent who comes to you with a concern or an issue that they want to have discussed, how does that communication happen between, you know, from the health assistant or the nurse to you to Pam? And what is the process that would typically take place?
It depends on where it would come to first, I suppose. So if the health assistant has a parent come to them, they would refer that to the nurse and, and then, you know, can I take your number down? Nurse can call later. And then if there's concerns that are kind of at a heightened level of that they feel like I should be included in that, and that has happened sometimes. And so I mean, I've gone to some of the IEP meetings when we've had parents with, students with health plans and we've worked with them and tried to come up with a plan that was specific to their needs and that's gone well.
Much of that data comes in through those health updates. As parents, you probably remember filling those out. But a lot of that data we get from the beginning of the year and a lot of time is consumed by contacting parents, you know, communicating with teachers, you know, principal, everybody knows the action plan, what's going on. So that, a lot of the information's gotten off of the health updates.
And I'll be honest, I have had very few concerns. And if I do, the first thing I always do is I ask if they have spoke directly with the nurse or not. I can think of only one time where I've been involved with a meeting with a parent.
And I haven't had many either. I can think of maybe two or three IEP meetings, but when I need to go for that and to kind of give my input as well, it's been helpful.
So what's your background?
I have, actually I have a degree in community health education, so, which is what kind of led me toward the public health sector. And then I'm an RN as well.
My last question is just for you guys, I mean, now that we're talking more about mental health, are you seeing, I mean, what's the swing, what's the percentage? Are you seeing a lot more of that or are you able to identify more of that? And what do you, what is your experience with that versus just physical needs, you know, the skin needs and that kind of thing?
I think over the last couple of years, I'm seeing a lot more, you know, just troubled children. And with some of the new resources that we've had with the new mental health counselors that are in place, I've seen that work, you know, even if it's, right now only been maybe two or three students, it's pretty significant for me to see because these, you know, they're pretty young and they're pretty troubled. So I've, I've seen it, I think it's great.
And we're glad to have those counselors now come in.
We do rely a lot on those and then just start with the counselors in the buildings.
I'm really impressed with, thank you for presenting this, I'm really impressed with how well coordinated this is and how well-run it is. Now we see those huge numbers for January. You guys are, with the split schools, you're good or sharing the schools like you do?
They don't look very tired.
Seriously, I was looking for, that's a lot of work.
Yeah. And so oftentimes when they're in their buildings, they jump right in with the health assistants because I was out at a school and Janet and that health assistant and I were there and all three of us were seeing kids and we had them lined up and calling parents. Yeah.
Some days it seems not, but some days it works perfect, you know?
And we've had an influx, this is kind of an influenza season and all of that, so that's what we kind of saw in January, I think.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out on a cool night.
We appreciate it.
Take care, thank you.
Moving on to item F on the agenda, the approval of Holmes Junior High School pavement improvement bids.
Okay, let's see if I can find it. Here we go. Okay. We asked for bids to improve the bus loading zone at Holmes Junior High School. That loading zone, for those of you that are familiar with the building, is along the east side where the activities entrances, where the entrance where you go into the pool. And that loading zone was never intended for the number of buses that were having in there in the afternoon originally. If you'll recall, we loaded and unloaded buses in front of the, front door of the building. And last school year, with some cooperation from the city of Cedar Falls, we did an experiment in turning that into a one-way. You came in at Holmes Drive, you went around behind the building, you came out of the west side. Administration, both at Holmes and at Hanson, really liked how that, the traffic flowed. And so we said, okay, we're going to try it another year just to, after the parking lot in the summer and, and see if we still like it. And reviews came back, a couple of minor tweaks that they would like to see done in the parking lot, but for the most part, we're very happy with, with it and we want to make it permanent. And so we've asked four contractors to submit bids to lengthen that bus loading zone area. And then we need to make a couple of minor modifications to a couple of the islands in the parking lot to help improve traffic flow and give folks that are driving in the area a better sense of which way they need to move around within the parking lot. And so you can see that we've got, three or four bids came back and our recommendation would be to take the low quote from Cunningham Construction at $91,500. I will tell you that there is a $15,000 contingency bill inside that number or allowance. And so if it's not needed, obviously that'll come off of that amount. And we would ask that, we would use physical planning equipment levy funds for this project if the board would be so gracious as to grant us to be for.
Do I have a motion to approve the pavement improvement bid at Holmes Junior High?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do I have any discussion or questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Did the original estimate include the contingency?
No, the original estimate did not include the contingency, that was something we added at the tail end.
So the 16.5 that Dan refers to is the contingency?
Right.
All about about $1,500.
Yeah, close enough, round numbers.
No, I, after the bid went out and went through it, I, I said, maybe we better throw a contingency in there just in case. And so there's a $15,000 allowance for contingency built into the project. Sometimes we don't build it in, I just build it into my budget, but in this case, we built it within the project.
Any other questions for Doug? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying a nine. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to item G on the agenda, the SBRC application.
Okay, that's me again. If the board will recall, a couple of months ago, I think it was in, it might have been in October, we asked the board to approve a request to the school budget review committee for administrative costs associated with the River Hills program. At that time, that request was for this current school year. Typically, you request to the SBRC a year in advance for this, this type of request is done a year in advance. So what we're, what we're asking for tonight is for next year's request for, to offset some administrative costs associated with the River Hills program. And you can see, this is the sheet that was sent out to all of the member schools within the consortium. And we have the estimated administrative salary for next school year along with the FICA and ICRA that's associated with that. And then we divided it by the number of students that we knew, that we had reasonably sure were going to be enrolled at River Hills for next year as of the 27th of January. And so we're estimating 104 students in the River Hills program next year and you can see the math. And in our case, Cedar Falls will have nine students at River Hills enrolled next year and the total request is for $12,301. Well, I got to make the numbers tie out. If we send it down to Moyn, we'll ask a question.
What's that called, double footing or something like that?
Do I have a motion, do I have a prepared motion for?
I'm moved that the board of directors of the Cedar Falls Community School District approved the.
approved the application to the school budget review committee for special education administrative costs for the 15, 16 school year in the amount of $12,301 and one penny.
Thank you, Jim. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the SBRC application. Any questions or discussion?
So in essence, all of these school districts are applying for, we took what we specifically approved. They're going to tell Marshalltown, you guys are crazy, we're not giving you $2,300 bucks or anything? Is this sort of an automatic?
It's, if we, if the request is submitted on time, and it was because I did it, I have not heard back from them. I think the SBRC meeting is next.
I think it's next week.
You know, and Bill Roder, who's the special ed consultant on DE and Suma Currie, who's the liaison for the SBRC with the DE, have not contacted me about anything. They typically will give you a heads up if there's an issue.
And what if there is contingency if Marshalltown doesn't get it in? I keep picking on them, it comes to my eyes first, but if they're not as good as you and they don't turn it in on time?
Well, the only caveat to this would be is if, if one of those schools on that list did not turn in the minutes to myself, because I submit all the information on behalf of the entire consortium, because we're the fiscal agent, then I suppose they could say, well, yeah, we approved it, but because we didn't get your minutes, we're going to kick you back out. That's, that's not going to happen with round one because all 26 school districts turned their request.
For next year.
For this current year. But I would assume that they would because, quite honestly, it's, it's not, all this is doing, what this does is it transfers, in our case, $12,300 from our general fund expense to special ed expense. That's really what, in essence, what this does.
And then if the headcount varies before next year, you just clean it up the following year?
We'll clean it up, we'll clean it up during the year next year. But we won't exceed that 120, 121,000 number. That's the max that we can do. We'll just modify it slightly within the pile.
Let the spreadsheet work it out.
Going back to Jim's question, there was a lot of work front-loaded to be able to get this in place. And the DE gave us this as the process to be able to use, to be able to fill out the SBRC application requirements. We are really kind of the first consortium in the state. Now, there are two additional consortiums, no, three additional consortiums that are following this model based on DE guidance. So we're one of the first ones to go down this path, but this is what they told us to do. So I think we'd be really surprised if they did not approve it.
We're kind of trailblazing this. We've even done a presentation at the fall Iowa School Business Officials Conference and we had Dave Nicholson, who's the CFO at the AEA here, and Jeff Berger, who's Assistant Director at the Department of Ed. We did a presentation on this. Been a lot of work, getting consortium set up. And there's, there's a lot of responsibilities on our district because we are the fiscal agent, all the dollars are flowing through us. And if you'll recall, last month, we started showing charts and I had all the graphs out of place. Well, the flow-through dollars that are on River Hills affect us and we'll talk about that at the budget hearing, but we're going to shift, we're going to basically put those dollars in a separate fund, completely out of the general fund in the future because it's skewing our solvency ratios and it's skewing a lot of things that, by taking it out and parking it over here, we still account for it, but it's not going to skew some of the other financial indicators that we have.
Questions? These teachers are Cedar Falls teachers?
These are the--
Administrator? No.
All of these employees, this employee and all the employees at River Hills program are employed by AEA 267. Cedar Falls, well, this consortium, all the school districts within the consortium contract the aid operate program.
The consortium's set up for each district one vote. So of all the districts listed, each one has a vote and the deciding factor in how the program works from students, so.
And we had our first consortium meeting earlier this month.
We did.
We have to have 15 of the 29 superintendents have to be either present or on some sort of electronic meeting. And with all due respect, Dr. Pat, he did a great job of facilitating that, but that's a real good example of how you herd cats.
And just to remind me, the building is owned by ours.
The building is owned by AEA. And you will see, in the not-too-distant future, a request on behalf, that Cedar Falls enter into a lease agreement with the AEA on behalf of the consortium to use that building. Now, what happens with that is should both the AEA and the consortium, i.e. Cedar Falls, approve that lease, it allows for certain expenses that would, that the AEA has no funding source to recoup, to be shifted to the consortium. Okay? Such as, it's not appropriate, or it's not a legitimate special education expense to pay for electricity and heat for building. That is specifically excluded by, by rules. By including those costs within the lease, which is what we would do, then it's a way for the AEA to recoup those costs. And because it's a lease agreement, it gives member consortium schools the option of paying for the lease out of their general fund, the physical plant and equipment levy, and/or their statewide one-cent sales tax if their revenue purpose statement allows it.
That's clear. Thank you.
It's been a while since we've talked about that, but at Hanson, when we approved the consortium agreement, we kind of talked a bit about this. This is a great model because it frees up general fund dollars that ultimately would be focused out of that general fund that we've been charged in the past. It allows us to go with the consortium to have more flexibility with how those funds are used. So it puts dollars back into the classroom for the right reasons and allows us to use our Pempl and our Cyval. And again, that's a testament to Doug and the work that they've done with the state to be able to get this crafted the right way for the right reasons so we can run the program effectively.
And there's, there's no fraction of an FTE for your time that you've put into this, correct?
We actually get to recoup, is it 1%?
Oh, 1 cent probably is yours.
Yeah.
The consortium agreement allows for the, for the fiscal agent district, or that would be us, to recoup up to 1% of the 1.0 cost per pupil, which is about $63 per child.
So it comes to about $6,300 a year, which doesn't come close to recouping the time that's invested by Doug and Donnell and others in the business office. But again, it's such a great program that it's well worth the time.
At least it's recognized.
Exactly.
And Carrie is a big piece of this too, because Carrie's tracking all those special needs kids that are flowing in and out of that program over the course of the year and making sure that they're set up in student management systems correctly because they're not considered tuition-in, they're considered resident districts consortium. And there was a couple of little tweaks that had to be statewide student enrollment upload count this fall to make that all work out. And Carrie was a big player in that.
And so, everybody's aware though, it is our building. I mean, it's our program because it's called our school, but it's a school that we, through this consortium, work with the AEA to operate through an agreement. So, you know, when you see beds reports or any other reporting that we do, it'll be listed as the Cedar Falls building, River Hills, just like Pete Wood, Holmes Wood, or any of our elementarys or high schools. So, but we contract out to be able to operate that building. And that's per DE guidance and requirements.
And there are no others in the state like that, are there?
There are. And that's what, we were the first to go with the consortium model because what happened was there was not a law change, there was a guidance change. And the guidance change was that AEA's can't run or operate schools or buildings. So what happened was any AEA that ran a building or a school, that's been reworded out to the local district. And then that caused districts to say, wait a second, we don't know how to run this or operate this in the way that we ran and operated school buildings in the past. We need to come up with some different models. And that's why then we trailblazed and Doug with his work on the consortium model, be able to move forward with this in the best way possible.
And we've had a lot of conversations from the folks at the school districts that have like Four Oaks program or, what's it, Hillcrest over in Dubuque.
Woodward Ranger.
Woodward is running their own now, so theirs got up and running about the same time we did. So those private firms that are operating these sorts of programs within the school district, the school district's responsible for that, sort of the same way, it's just that they're working with a private entity and where with us, we're contracting with the AEA.
I see. Beloit names is probably the same kind of thing, right? Beloit names?
Yeah, they might be.
They might be.
Yeah. I couldn't either. Right now, I think there's four of the consortiums that are in the works, but again, we were the first to try to walk through this. A lot of people are calling and trying to figure out some of our agreements and pieces in place. And our superintendent's been great to work with, to a T. They've all said that this is a tremendous program, we need to continue the program and we want to move forward with the consortium model. And the first meeting, as Doug said, was extremely well organized and ran with the AEA and Doug's help and certainly it's one of those aspects where we're happy to move forward with it.
Great discussion. Great discussion. Thank you. Thank you, and the business office.
I'll pass it on.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to item H, I think Dr. Pat T. has passed around the approval, the list of the attendance boundary committee members.
This is one of those living, breathing documents, if that's okay, because we'll continue to add some additional names to it, but we're going to ask the board to approve the names as they currently set, those 24 names. Both Pam and I will be at the meetings and attend the meetings, so there'll be, you know, 26 people there. But we're working with a couple of our buildings and a couple of our parent groups to continue to add some names to this. So with the board's permission, I would say we will bring more than likely some names back to you at the March meeting, just for approval. But we do know that the first meeting will take place prior to that board meeting, so we'll probably have some unapproved members that will be there, knowing that they will be hopefully retroactively approved for that committee. We're striving to get three parents from each of our attendance centers, which include our junior highs. We have some, somebody from our transportation center, an administrator as well, as well as Pam and I, that will be in attendance at those meetings. So really focused on having this be a parent-driven, a community-driven committee, to be able to ask good questions, to look at this holistically, come up with the options that we know we need to have as the options presented before us and have great faith in RSP that they're running a tremendous process as we look at the data and the needs of our district. They're already undertaking the next study for enrollment and those numbers will be, continue to be utilized as we look at the enrollment process, the numbers in our buildings and how do we help balance that in the future. So again, living, breathing document, not the final document. We'll continue to hopefully add members as they become available.
Would it be possible before the meeting to have a list of the people with their affiliations?
I think so. What we want to try to do is blend some of those affiliations just because we don't want somebody to be labeled, you're this parent. So, yeah, but I think we can do that.
But it could be, well, what's wrong with identifying it as a parent?
No, not a parent, just of a district, of a definitive, of a building.
Oh, I don't, I don't particularly care about the building, but parent, teacher, staff.
Yeah, not a problem. Yep. I just, we didn't want to label which building they're from.
No, 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 no. This canyon guy, for instance, I don't know. What's his affiliation?
Of a typo.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, not a problem.
Do I have a motion to approve the committee?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Yes, we, a couple of different items. Number one, tomorrow morning, we have the UA legislative advocacy trip. Right now, we have down Joyce, Susan, Jenny, Jim, then Dan and myself that are attending and the plan is to leave at 7:30 from this building tomorrow morning to move to Des Moines. I believe Council Bluffs is the other district that is there tomorrow as an advocacy. We meet first with Margaret Buckton for a bit to get an overview of some of the pieces of legislation currently moving through the legislative session and some of the pieces that are talking points to be able to delve into. Then we'll go to the Capitol and I know our local legislators know that we're coming and the opportunity to meet with them throughout the day. The thought would be we'd be back in by 3 o'clock. So, you know, we'll probably leave the Capitol roughly about 1 o'clock and be back in Cedar Falls by that 3 o'clock timeframe. Should be, should be a great trip and certainly an opportunity to advocate. March 9th, board meeting. Right now, it's the only board meeting we have scheduled in March. We, by our calendar, we're continuing to review and Doug's working hard on trying to revamp what the budget will look like with a lot of unknowns at this time. So we'll more than likely present some budget scenarios to the board on March 9th, but depending, we may need to look at a work session sometime in that normal second board meeting of March time, but the hope would be that the board feels comfortable with the scenarios and the impacts based on what could happen with the supplemental state aid being 0%, because that would be the fallback number. If the House and the Senate can't agree and they can't pass a bill because they lack the ability to come to a consensus, the fallback will be zero. So we want to make sure that that's one of the scenarios, that is 0% supplemental state aid and the impact that has. The 1.25, that is currently the governor's recommendation and we'll look at that as at the board table to see if the impact on that. Other than that, that's all I had.
When do we do our calendar?
Great question. We're working, we have calendar scenarios right now. I don't want to set a calendar and then say we're going to revamp it. I think we need to be able to look and we're trying to come up with, when is the feasible date just to have the drop dead date? My fear is, and this is probably the realist in me, that that's going to be one of the political ponds used to help set the supplemental state aid. So it might not be till April by the time this is decided at the legislative level. It's one of the pieces we'll advocate for tomorrow as well when we go down. But if we don't hear, probably in the next two weeks, we need to set a date and that date is going to be August 31st because that is the date that's allowed underneath the Iowa code and the current edict that was passed recently, which means then we will more than likely look at a June 7th through June 8th dismissal for the following year. The impact that that has, we'll just have to work with internally to make sure that it has a limited impact on students and classrooms and trying to help prep for AP courses and other courses that are college-ready and college-bound. If there is a compromise within the next few weeks, then we need to be able to hopefully set a calendar that's feasible.
Can we go back and change or amend the calendar then?
You can, but again, so many people, once you, once you publicize a calendar, people set their schedules based on the publicized calendar. So for us to say--
It's probably better to wait as late as we can.
It's better to wait a little longer. You know, people that have emailed me, I tell them, again, we're looking at a couple of different dates for a start date and here's what it could look like, but it's all based on what the Iowa code and the change in code happens at the legislative level. Again, once you set it though, it's going, it's virtually impossible to go back and change it because people set their schedules.
I'm glad we're going to wait a couple of weeks then.
If we wind up setting an August 31 start date and a kid wants to take class at the University of Northern Iowa, are they able to take the class starting when the University of Northern Iowa starts? Is that--
That's going to be a challenge.
I get it.
Yes, they would be able to. There's not a, well, you know, it's a good question. Because it's a college-level course and more than likely, it's going to be a PSEO course, that falls underneath a different level. We can still count that as a high school equivalent course, which we do. There's a lot of nuances involved with this that we need clarification on and we've asked for some of that clarification, but there's not a lot there right now because people haven't really vested or vetted through some of those questions through the system. There's multiple layers here that we are just concerned about.
You know, what if, what if districts just around the state set their calendar for that 30th date and took that off the table as a bargaining tool? Okay, Des Moines, we're just removing this and we want to focus on supplemental state aid and we're just going to set the calendar knowing, you know, that you may not make that decision for a little while.
Districts are starting to do that.
I know, yeah.
And I think that comes from that, that pressure to set that calendar because again, we know parents want to know, we know our staff wants to know so they can set their summer schedules. The challenge is, is that what's best, the best interest of students with some of the other questions that are circulating now. They're knowing what the challenges are with PSEO, AP courses, some of our concurrent enrollment classes and just a myriad of other issues.
Finishing the first semester in December.
You know, those are all things that are good for kids and we want for kids. So we know, even with the current, you know, there's two different bills that are working through the system. One is a compromise bill that says you can't start before August 23rd, which would put us in alignment with the community colleges and the university, regional universities across the state. The other bill that's working through the Senate says that there will be no requirement The other, the other bill that's working through the Senate says that there will be no requirement by O C O. It's, it's all locally driven. We don't think that'll probably come to fruition, or be a compromise in some form, we just don't know what. Uh, it'll be, be interesting. We, we do know though that we'll have to set a date pretty soon. That's just going to say, here's a drop dead date, we'll set the calendar based on that drop dead date, and, and we'll move forward. But we've already developed options and scenarios, and kind of looked at different options and scenarios. The thing that we have said though, we are an hours-based entity. Uh, but I think it's very important for us to continue with a hundred and eighty days of instructional time. You know, there are going to be some districts, and are some districts, that are now lessening the amount of instructional days, and going down to a hundred and seventy days, in some cases, a hundred and sixty-eight days, a hundred and seventy-two days of instruction time. And again, I'm not sure that puts us in a position where you truly focus on the needs of kids by giving them maybe two weeks longer, three weeks longer, in some cases, of a, a summer break. That's not really focused on instructional, uh, practices or best for kids. Plus, I don't think the research out there, and there's a lot of studies that just show.
So we came up with a hundred and eighty days, why not make it two hundred and ten?
You know, the hundred and eighty days was set in Iowa code forever.
Why, in part of that research you, you mentioned?
There's not, you know, a lot of the, uh, national or international benchmarking that we are metric against are, they have longer school years, calendar years than we do. So we, when you look at some of the, the thing that's never been delved or, or looked into at a, at a deeper level. Um, in the Midwest, you know, we know Minnesota goes to school about a hundred and seventy-five days, I believe. I think Missouri goes a hundred and seventy days. Um, and then I think Wisconsin, North Dakota, South Dakota, and Nebraska go a hundred and eighty days. So that's kind of the, the, the number, but again, we, yeah, it makes sense. The more you're in school, the more you learn. The more you're engaged, the more you learn. The higher the rigor, the more you learn. Just makes sense.
Questions, comments, or concerns in the board?
Uh, I'm sorry for, for the notes, but I've noticed sometimes when I really speak off the cuff, I get misunderstood. So I did take it, wrote a couple notes down. Uh, I'd like to talk a couple of things, our technology program. Uh, first of all, I think it's clear to everybody, certainly anybody with kids in the system, but I think people are hearing it. Uh, it's been a meaningful integration of technology. We have not just taken technology as a checkbox and put a check in it, see, we're doing technology. It's integrated with every aspect of the kid's education, uh, throughout the schools. There's one detail among the success that people aren't talking about, which is that it, it was impossible to do. Uh, I know it was impossible to do, because I remember when we had the plan, people telling us how it was impossible. Uh, just not to be negative, I could, but I'm sure everybody here is now has your mental list of all the reasons this could not happen. Uh, but it did happen. Uh, I think it was because we had the will, we had talented people. I'm not including myself there, this all kind of was, before I came to the board, it was all an option. Uh, but when we called problems challenges, we weren't just using business speak, we used them as challenges, we overcame them. And again, I need to emphasize, by we, I mean everybody in the room but myself. Uh, then if we want to talk about the P L Cs, I think that's another success. Meaningful measurable results, uh, it's an inherent part of the school district. We're being honored and emulated by other districts. Again, it's not just a checkbox, so look, we have P L Cs. It's clearly used, uh, that I became enlightened the first visit to a P L C. And, uh, again, I'm going to reveal the dirty secret is that this in fact was impossible. Uh, here, I don't know the history, but I could come up with ten reasons why this could never, ever happen. And, uh, it did. And so I want to talk about the languages. Uh, two years ago, as a parent, I took a survey about language instruction in schools, uh, that, this was the Harris survey, and it said ninety-one percent of, uh, the parents wanted language instructions in schools. Uh, I didn't understand at the time what ninety-one percent meant, uh, until we dealt with the bond issue. Uh, we got ninety-one percent of parents to agree on something. And I cannot picture ninety-one percent of parents agreeing on anything else, including the fact that the earth moves around the sun. So we have, uh, our board goal that we'll receive deliberate and act upon recommendations for the future delivery of world language instruction. We did this because the research shows that early language education is good for the development of our children. And I also believe we did this because now we're finishing up the first fifth of the twenty-first century, and our students are going to be competing for jobs with people who speak the language of their clients and their customers. So as we did with technology, we created a committee to study the problem. They decided, I remember hearing about, uh, this is while I'm on the board, hearing about the onsite visits with, to other schools who are having success with such programs. And I think we were all very enthusiastic about the possibilities. The meeting before last, we talked about where we're going now, and I think, well, technically, we might be checking this box, but I don't think it was the intent of the goal. Uh, we have what now is an elective that we were told will not help the students with future language studies per se. The language instruction is kind of mixed with social studies content. And there's no way we're going to get instructors that are fluent in three languages. And I don't think that's what I expected, and I don't think that was our intent. And I guess what I'm saying is, I think we can do better than that. And I know we can do better, because we did it with technology and the P L Cs. Every time we have the will, we are able to do things that I would be the first person to say can't be done. And, uh, so I would urge us with the, this goal on world languages to come up with something that is more in line with what we thought it would be. And I can't tell you how, because it's impossible, but I think if we have the will, we can do it.
And I appreciate that, and, and being involved with that oral language committee, it's a, it's a stepping stone. Just as, you know, technology is always a stepping stone as you look to improve and get better in your P L C process. As we, you know, where we're at now, and where we were five years ago, completely different, uh, with all those. So I think five years from now, as we, we look back, we, we say that the first stepping stone, the process is put in place. Uh, where we'll be at at that time, I think we'll be extremely proud of where we're at. But we have to have those stepping stones to start that process. And we know that that elective, as it continues to go down into lower grade levels, and, and have more exposure of vocabulary acquisition skills, as well as that cultural competency that we know is so extremely important, is going to continue to, to expand through our system. So it's, it's a great opportunity, but it, it certainly is a stepping stone, as, as we talked about last month, last month. Okay.
I think it's too small, I think it's too small a stepping stone. I, I honestly think we could do better than it.
I appreciate that, yeah. I think we would all want the magic wand to have something that's maybe different. But as we went through those site visits, there are some people that have it as a checkbox, and we don't want to do that. Because if you do it as a checkbox, you have inconsistency, you have lack of systemness, which was very evident in several districts, and really, um, a lack of clarity of direction with, with other districts. And that's not fair. And then what happens is you have, uh, some districts that are, that we know were, uh, renowned for world language programs that are cutting world, some of their, um, junior highs this year. And that's not something we want to do down the road. We want to make sure that we do it with the right, uh, viewpoint in mind as we, we take the steps forward. And I think that's what's happening. We, we have great people that looked at this, great people that'll continue to look at this, and certainly the focus now and into the future, um, I think from not only the committee, but I think from our administrators, from our board, from our parents. I think this is something that we know is a continued focus.
So through the committee process, to determine what we ended up doing, I'm assuming there are other options, um, within that context of what we possibly could do. A dream list, maybe some more practical.
Yeah.
So how much of, how much of what we're doing now is because of, um, budgetary?
We went through, uh, some of it's, uh, you know, making sure that we're system, uh, have a systems approach and, and can make sure it's sustainable. Uh, that's part of it, but other aspects are some parts, when you look at the whole continuum of world language, and, and again, I wasn't really prepared to, to talk on this tonight, because I had to go back and review some of the notes, uh, because our content experts that are on the committee are much more knowledgeable. But you can go all the way from a full immersion program, which we said in Cedar Falls, it doesn't make sense. You know, that, that immersion program is not probably the model that we would look at, because typically schools, especially schools, uh, in Iowa that have a full immersion program is like one building. That's going to be an immersion program because of the, the high needs of the community, or some of the, um, demographic needs of that community. For us, then, we looked at, you know, starting, uh, at kindergarten, moving up, or, or starting with a different program at, at the third grade level. And we had this spreadsheet, a Google doc, that had probably six different options across the top. We started looking at pros and cons, from there, we started looking at our non-negotiables. And then from there, paring down which of those would meet our non-negotiables as we looked to the future. Uh, this one seemed to, to generate and resonate, and then, uh, the committee said, go and, and look at, how do we implement that from that model, going from ninth grade to eighth grade, eighth grade to seventh grade and down, so we can have that system, systemness in mind. So this was the option that we, we moved forward with. Now, there are multiple options, we're looking at that, that kind of top-down model. And again, top-down, talking from ninth grade to eighth grade, eighth grade to seventh grade, and trying to come up with the, the most feasible option, uh, to be able to fit that, to make sure that, again, it has a systemness, it has an ability to, um, create a curriculum that's going to, um, be consistent and coherent from grade level to grade level. And again, this seemed like it was the best approach to, to get that, and design a curriculum that could start at eighth grade, work its way to seventh grade, work its way down to sixth grade, fifth grade, fourth grade, and continue to expand and, and offer more for kids.
I know, because a lot, the big factor, what it seemed to me that launched a lot of our technology that we did was that additional monies we got from the state. That was sort of an impetus behind, what, half a million initially, or a million and a half or something? And then we sort of figured out it could be sustainable. But I, I don't know if we, I just say that as a point of reference. So as I've thought through it, again, those in the committee, I apologize, because whether you weren't prepared to discuss it or just ideas come up, but, um, I know Davis mentioned when we've been a part of the different, um, meetings within the schools, he was most impressed with the fact of the tech, of the, um, the good part of the brain for kids who take language.
Right, early development, yeah.
I don't have notes.
The thinky part.
Yeah. Uh, and, and mine was the immersion from which end, within those languages that we were teaching, and especially with the impetus of the technology, that we could help the kids in some menial way to be in Spain for an hour or something like that. And so I'd feel better if, if, you know, here's what we're doing, and then we're going to move down. But, but some of those details to encompass more of those benefits that, again, Dave thought, and many of us thought, were the benefit of the, of the mental learning, my thought in terms of the immersion and stuff like that. I just don't know if those discussions were made, or it's sort of.
Oh, yeah, we had those discussions.
Baby step and see, then baby step and see, or something like that.
Well, when, when you look at systemness, you've got to be able to build that in over time. You know, we could never just start a world language program with one false swoop, K through eight. I mean, we couldn't do that. We're looking at probably about eight F T Es, uh, which would be about half a million dollars or more, um, probably more. We just couldn't do that. So we have to be able to take the right measures and the right steps to be able to put this program into place with the right framework. So I, I think we're comfortable with that, I think the committee was comfortable with that, and, and that's why we brought that information to the board. And that's why we've registered kids with that information that we brought to the board, to be able to start that process next year.
Any thoughts with the other electives that are now a part of our offering? And going back to Doug's point, in terms of, uh, if there was a survey of all these electives, what sort of percentage support would we get? I'm assuming nothing would come as close to ninety-one percent as world language. Any discussion in terms of, let's pull this class, there's seven kids doing it, and this class, there's fifteen, whereas world language might have fifty-five or something like that?
We have that every year, yeah. We have that every year, and we go through that program, and, and we review all those with our department chairs and, and what's happening. Uh, we did not have a great turnout or a great, uh, signup for world language. We have many more kids that are signed up in a lot of other electives that they are passionate about, and, uh, it was not a great signup. So that was one of the indicators, as we continue to look, how do we continue to get interest? And how do we build that interest to, to be able to expand that? So we do, we'll continue to work on it.
Well, I agree with Doug, I think we need a five-year plan, similar to what we had for technology. And, uh, I, I look back at the document from when this was presented, I wasn't here, but it seems like it's going to be one grade per year?
The hope is that we'll drill down, yeah.
I, I really think we need to revisit this as a group and see if we can accelerate the plan.
We will have to look at other options, and what we're going to pull back on. And again, that's, I, I would hate for, I, I think, you know, the role of the board is to be able to, to help with some of the goals, but not the, the specific targeted approach with some of those goals. So again, I think, you know, flying down too low into some of those expectations, you've got to be cautious as a board, because the curriculum and the classes are, are derived typically from the administration. So if you expect to, to see a, a five-year plan, we can help develop that. But the timeline's going to be based on that systemic timeline, and, and making sure that we can do this holistically.
I'm asking for the same amount of effort that we put into technology, and I don't think we did with world language.
Oh, I appreciate that. I disagree with that, but I appreciate that, so.
I mean, I think what might be helpful is, you know, as we're looking at these different grades, I don't know how much of it, as a district, we've decided is important, or we, we want this many minutes in this, or how much of it is Iowa code or D E guidance, that we need this many minutes of something. So, you know, when we're looking at eighth grade and seventh grade, and then our specials in the elementary, I think it would be helpful for me to know why we do the specials the way we do. I mean, is it something that is dictated to us, is it a choice we've made? And if it's a choice we've made, what is the reasons we've made that choice? And I think that would give us some context for, you know, we can all sit here and probably have different opinions on what classes are maybe rise to the level of value versus others. But if there's, if there's reasons that that's the way it is, it would be helpful to know that.
Right. Jenny, I don't, I don't think it's an easy, always an either-or thing with, for example, with language. Uh, languages can be incorporated into a music class. I remember my, my first, uh, of German was, was in the elementary school, and it was Christmas, and we started singing O Ten and Baum and all that stuff, you know? But then we like took time to know what the words we were singing meant.
And I do think some of that happens, you know, already, probably on a case-by-case basis, depending on the special and the teacher. But, you know, there are some of those things, I think, that are set, and there's a reason they're set, or there maybe there isn't a reason they're set, and it's time for us to review that.
Right. No, and those are things that we, we look at and review, and again, there's offer and teach requirements at the state level for different electives and different non-core areas. So you just have to be cognizant of that as you set those schedules. Uh, plus, like you said, a lot of it is with our students making some of those decisions, because you look at your elective programs.
I'm just going by the research I saw from the committee.
But specifically with the, the world language elective, if there's a low enrollment for that, what I'm wondering, and I don't know what the answer is, if instead of offering the world language elective, we offered French, would there be a higher or a lower enrollment? I, I mean, I don't know.
Right.
My suspicion, obviously, bringing it up, is I think that if we said your eighth grader can take French, I believe that there would probably be a higher enrollment.
Right, and that's the, the focus into the future, to be able to, to bring down each of the languages down to the eighth grade level. That way, kids can have that fifth year of their foreign language, world language, to be more of a, a fifth year or more of an enrichment opportunity, or to pre, so much limited time within our, our school day, where, once you look at the four core classes, and typically, most of our, uh, enriched students will take either some A P courses, or it could be world language, it could be banned a course, they, they very much are then eliminate themselves of the courses. So what we try to do is make sure that, you know, if that's a pathway, and, and all of a sudden, they have another year where they have a elective opportunity, their senior year, because they've already maxed out four years of, of, of world language, that's great for kids, because that's what we want. We want them to be able to have exposure and experiences as they move into college.
So I, I mean, I said that specifically when we were talking about the low enrollment of world language. I don't know if it's a disinterest in that subject, or if it's a disinterest in that elective. And I don't even know how one would figure that out.
Right, well, we'd have to offer it the following year with the, uh, eighth grade, and we'll find out for enrollments increase.
And I, I would say personally, experience, we have so many great electives, and there is not a lot of space because of the core requirements. I mean, it's, you know, I don't think any of my kids are going to go through and have taken every course they want to have taken, because there just isn't the time to do it, so it's hard to.
There's not.
It's, it's hard. I mean, we're lucky, it's a good problem to have.
It's impossible, though.
But it's a process.
I said they're, they're never going to do it with the Chromebooks. I said it was impossible, and you did it.
Right.
So those are things that I think that as we look, you know, we can't look at a one-year shot, two-year shot, of where this has headed. And I think we need to look five years down the road. Where do we want to be, and how can we best get there?
And as, as we shared, that's part of our, uh, strategic discussions we're having with our administrators as well, as we look at how do we embed, because they want that world language, that cultural experiences for kids. How do we put that into place? So we can bring that to the board table to have those, those further discussions. It's important, it's important work. Uh, again, it has to be sustainable. I do not want to be like other districts, where they're starting to cut some of these programs for kids, or they have them in, in fourth and fifth grade, they don't have them in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and the curriculum is exactly the same in ninth grade, because you have a three-year gap. We cannot do that as a district, because I think that's an injustice for kids. And it's not very useful, um, or worthwhile use of your resources. So it has to be sustainable, if not, don't spend the money on it. It can't be a checklist. But again, it's for us to have a stepping stone, to be able to have a systemic process, that's what we need. But everybody won't get everything that they want in one false swoop. It's, you just can't make it happen. If we did, it would be a, a bottomless well for funding, and we don't have that.
I think we all understand that, yeah.
I know, but again, sometimes I want that clarity to be out there.
But I'm, I'm more at a systems approach, and I just didn't see the energy that went into, uh, technology applied at world language, so.
Why, and why, why do you say that?
I don't know why, you tell me why.
Well, I'm asking, what did you not see?
Where's the five-year plan?
Well, I'm asking, what did you not see, the five-year plan?
Yeah, I, I would like to know what we're going to do in order to, to get going at the elementary level, because to me, that's all we lack to be a world-class school, is getting this, this other dimension of, of neural development.
As we drill down, I think it'll be interesting if we did, when we get down to the sixth grade level and not make it an elective. I think that is where, where you'll find your sustainability.
Right.
At, at, at the junior high level, where it is an elective. But if you, you, once you get down to that elementary and it is part of the curriculum, everybody takes it, I think that's, it'll be interesting to-
It will be. It's, it's kinda exciting as we look to the future. And again, we have to make sure we make systemic, because again, it can't be something that is in place and then not in place, and then in place, and then not in place. You just can't do that. And I know people at this table understand that, but there'll be people that'll be watching this, and you guys will be indicators as you go out and talk to, to individuals. That has to be stress, that again, it has to be sustainable. We have to make sure that the fund is in, in, in order, and we have to make sure that it's something that's not gonna be here one day and gone another. Actually, we can't do that.
So, would it be possible in terms of the discussions, and you may have mentioned one of the ramifications, if for the same amount of money, or a little bit more, we could cover, as an example, K through three courses, because it's just a, it's part of a special, or it's twenty-five minute other day, whatever, how do they do that? I don't quite understand that. But then, we are having that neurological benefit at a, at a broader spectrum. And again, it's an introduction. It's, it's these kids who are gobbling up anything and everything that might be able to sift through by the time they need to take it in ninth grade. And I just, I'm just wondering if the feedback that was given there, 'cause I, that in part is, is, is what is allowing me to question is, because I think that presentation was, here's what we're gonna do. We did it. And, and none of us were basically a part of those committee meetings.
Dave was. And, and, and that's where I struggled a little bit, because we went through a pretty extensive committee work to get to that level. And the board eventually either has to have all those discussions here, or you have to have trust that your committee is doing the right work.
Well, I just wanna ask you, what, do you recall, I know we're talking-
Yeah, we looked at a lot of different things. And again, we had multiple scenarios, multiple items that we looked at and reviewed, and, and tried to come up with a plan that was gonna be systemic in nature. You know, when you look at number of courses, number of classes, number of sections per elementary, you know, we run twenty to twenty-two sections right now, most of our elementary grade levels. You take that times, you know, four grade levels, a hundred sections, it's tough to be able to embed a teacher into that. And then you look at the schedules, and you start looking at the number of FTEs for that. And if you started at K three, you need to have a plan for four, five, six as well. And then you start looking at all the sections that we offer and the number of FTEs. We just can't do that right now. So, again, that's why, when we started looking at one of the non-negotiables for sustainability, we said, let's start with the backwards mapping in mind. Let's start in eighth grade and seventh grade, work our way down to sixth grade and then fifth grade, to make sure that that is done strategically for the right reasons, with the right timeframe. So, if all of a sudden, we have a zero percent supplemental state aid one year, and we can pause, and we don't have to say, we're going to put in, because we went bottom up, next year, if we don't offer in fourth grade, we've just lost a whole year of sustainability for our kids, instead of saying, we're gonna cut X amount of teachers to be able to move into fourth grade. This gives us a year that all of a sudden, if we have something strange happen at the funding level, at the legislative level, we can make the right decisions for our kids and not just have to, to do it because of age progression.
Jim, Danny's point earlier about what level the board should be involved, I purposely skipped the committee meetings this school year, because I thought the committee was getting into the kinda detail that it wasn't for me to, to be involved in. And I, I'd rather have this kinda discussion with a full board, rather than a particular board member saying, that'll fly, no, that won't fly. I just didn't really think that was my role at that level of detail.
I think it was helpful for technology to have that five-year plan, and I'm thankful that you guys did the due diligence, because I was the person who's like, go, 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 'cause that's just the kinda person I am. So, I mean, without that, I, I really didn't understand when I first came on the board, that sustainability piece. I mean, it is, if you don't have that, it really doesn't matter what you do, because it's not gonna work. So, I, I am, I've totally come full circle on how important that is. So, with world language, what the optimist in me, which is a small part of me, but want to believe will happen, is if we have maybe a, a more specific plan, I mean, right now, I think we did just hear what's gonna happen next year, and if it was maybe a little more lengthy, with technology, what happened is, we were able to meet those goals earlier because the stars were aligned. You know, we, we had the funding, and, and I think there was more buying as people saw how successful it was. So, you know, we really met all those goals earlier than we ever thought we would. So, maybe if we were able to see even a three-year vision for world language, once we start some of these first steps, if we get the buy-in and, and finances are, are in a good spot, you know, maybe we are able to pull some of those goals up earlier and...
Good, good conversation, great conversation. I, I mean, I know you weren't prepared to answer all those questions, but-
No, it would've been good to-
But, but that's okay.
Had a little bit of knowledge, that this was something that we wanted to discuss this evening, 'cause I probably could've formalized a little bit more presentation for this.
But I, I think that-
'Cause it seems like this was something that people had some thoughts on coming into this meeting, so.
Well, you and I had one brief conversation about it. I think Joyce was there.
Gotcha, yeah.
I said you should be back before the last meeting, and then it was like ten o'clock, and I didn't wanna bring anything-
Gotcha, okay. I appreciate that.
Goes back to our policy that we learned from the first get-go is no surprises, so it'd be nice to let know if you've got discussion, bring them in earlier.
I think sometimes, too, when we have a conversation, it's, it's just like the technology plan. I, I have to be honest, before we really saw what the five-year plan was, it was a little shaky in the beginning, you know, as you walked through that. It was not easy. And I want to believe, the optimist in me, too, like Jenny, that I think that it seems a little rough, maybe right now, we have a little bit of a plan. I think there's more direction than what, than what we realize. And we just wanna, I think what I'm hearing is, we just would like to hear about it, too, but know that, you know, I, I think we all wished that it could be pre-K twelve. I mean, you know, we, all of us in this room, because we know it's the right thing. But we also live in dollars and numbers, and so, we need to-
Time.
And time, and so, we need to be conscious of that, too, and what maybe our priorities are. And, and I, I do believe that in this room, our priorities are in the right place, and it's just figuring that out. So-
Exactly.
Appreciate you answering those questions tonight, and I, I appreciate the discussion that we've had. So, anything else to come before the board?
Before.
All right. Thank you. Do I have a second? All in favor signify the same eye?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion to adjourn. Thank you.